Commissioners, I'm gonna call our meeting to order. Call and roll, please, ma'am.
A.G., here. Harrod.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Dykstra.
Here.
And Quorum.
If you're able to stand, please stand with me and we'll recite the Lord's Prayer. Commissioners, would you read us in the flags?
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass in the essence; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Commissioner A.G. is gonna lead us in the flags.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on the agenda is Consider Approval of the Consent Agenda. So moved. Well, Commissioner Dykstra, I heard him first. We have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Harris. Okay, let's vote.
It's all right, isn't it?
No, that's okay. You both said it about the same time, but I hear better out of my right ear. Motion carries. Motion carries. Item number two is Citizens' Participation. We encourage any citizens that are here to feel free, if they have something they would like to share with us, please come forward. No one coming forward then, I will move on to item number three, which is Proclamations. This proclamation is a proclamation declaring April 2016 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Shawnee. Pursuant to the authority granted to me as mayor of the City of Shawnee, I hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Fair Housing Month and decree that all citizens are affirmed to follow the concepts, practices, and intent embodied by the laws of the United States of America, the State of Oklahoma, and the City of Shawnee. The City of Shawnee has adopted a fair housing ordinance and has designated the month of April as Fair Housing Month and encourages each citizen to implement the provisions of those acts. The City Commission has further designated a city clerk as the Fair Housing Activities Coordinator and requests that any person or group of persons planning activities promote fair housing to inform the Fair Housing Activities Coordinator of said activities. It is the desire of the City of Shawnee to recognize those persons or groups who best create an awareness of the need for fair housing practices or otherwise promotes fair housing practices. Now therefore, I west Maynard, by the virtue of authority invested in me as mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and urge all citizens to join us in recognizing fair housing and the importance it serves to our community. Thank you, sir. I think I have another one here. Telecommunications week. Anybody? Come right on up here, yeah. National Public Safety Telecommunication Week. Whereas emergencies can occur of any kind that requires police, fire, or emergency medical services, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Shawnee. And whereas professional public safety telecommunicators are a vital link between citizens and victims and are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, our firefighters, and emergency medical personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators of the City of Shawnee dispatch... Let me read this again. Whereas, public safety telecommunicators of the City of Shawnee dispatch 90,000 calls in 2015. And whereas the public safety telecommunications of the City of Shawnee Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients while exhibiting compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job dispatched here. Whereas, in honor of the men and women who diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, your valuable service should be applauded and held in the highest regard all through the year. For without your commitment, devotion, and hard work, countless number of lives and property would be in jeopardy. Thank you for helping our communities and keeping us safe. Now therefore, I west Maynard, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10 through 16, 2016, to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Item number four is Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Authorize Staff to Enter Into An Agreement with Fritz Bailey Architects of Tulsa, Oklahoma to Provide Design, Engineering, and Biddable Construction Documents for the Repair and Renovation of Fire Station Number Two Located at 1401 North Bryant. I was gonna call, but you're out here.
I'm right here. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. As you see in the memo, basically, this is following our conversation at the special call meeting. Phase one has been completed now, and we discussed that. That was basically the construction cost estimate done by Fritz Bailey. And this is for phase two, which is the actual design and give us the biddable construction documents and then the actual construction management. In the amount, total amount of $94,000 is their bid to us. And staff is recommending approval of that. Any questions?
Any discussion in this matter? Commissioner Shaw, you ready?
If you could educate me, on page four, on 2.5, it talks about workers' compensation. Is that $100,000 in there? Is that for aggregate, or is that per incident?
I don't know. I'd be honest with you, I'd have to find that out. I do not know. I can definitely get that information, though, and let you know.
I would appreciate it. I think that would be meaningful. On page 11, 4.3.1 and 4.3.2 have been marked through. What impact do those changes mean?
I'm sorry, I was taking notes on that other one.
It's okay, page 11.
Yes, ma'am.
4.3.1 and 4.3.2, there's marks through there, and I just want to know what, if that's meaningful.
It is, and those are all things that we asked for. This is a standard, my understanding, a standard AIA architectural contract. So this is some stuff that engineer, City Engineer Crywiki was very helpful with us in negotiating the contract with them. And this is some stuff that we did not want in the contract, and Fritz Bailey was acceptable to that, and they lined all that out for us.
Okay, on page 14, Article 8, I noticed that lines have been marked all the way through the Claims and Disputes area. Do we still have indemnification and liability coverage under this?
Yes, we do. I may ask John to help me with that, just to make sure I understand. He's been very, he's been helping with that. But I know we wanted to do away with the arbitration, and if we had a dispute, it would be settled in court.
If you'll reference 10.1, which is an add-in, it's in a different font.
Yes.
States of disagreement shall be governed by the laws of the State of Oklahoma without regard to conflicts of law, provisions, jurisdiction, and venue, shall be in Potawatomi County District Court, Shawnee, Oklahoma. Essentially, that's making up for all of the stricken language in 8.1, to ensure that it would be a district court action in the event of a dispute.
Okay, thank you. On page 18, 11.5, under the compensation, I noticed they changed their exhibit date.
Yes, I think, and that was the same thing, it was a standard language in the contract, and they preferred to handle that in that exhibit, as opposed to, which gave more explanation.
Okay. And page 30, civil, I'd noticed that from the third sentence from the bottom of the paragraph, "Architect is not responsible for design services of the civil engineer." And I was just wondering if, since they're one of the consultants who would be responsible for the design services, I guess, if something were to happen under that?
I believe the civil engineering we were going to take care of, in-house.
I just seen on there that it had civil engineering as someone else other than the city. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion in this matter?
I've talked to both city manager and also to Dr. about the $94,000, I think. That's probably about $20,000 to $25,000 too much. But the alternative is, if we don't do it, then we're putting it off. If we go out for bids, work with another architect, or do something else, then we're putting it off 30 or 45 more days to redo it. So I still think it's too much money, but rather than have to come, the staff to start all over again, I'd move we approve the contract with the stipulation that before the final documents are ready for bids, that I sign off on the spec book and on the drawings. Because I wanna make sure that we don't have a lot of things in there that are, the prices are absorbing. So I personally feel like the 11, $1.1 million is about $300,000 too high. So I move that we do approve the contract with the stipulation that I sign off on the plans and specifications before they're produced for bidding.
So you, do you wanna make that into a motion?
That's into the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Harris.
I'll second that.
And we have a second by Commissioner A.G. Okay, and did you get the motion?
I think so.
Okay, that he signs off.
Can I ask a question, Jim? Just...
Yeah.
What happens if you don't sign off on it?
Well, if I get killed or something, well, then, our, whatever, I still have to find my real act if it comes up to that time. I'll sign off on it, we'll just negotiate out with the architect, different items on there. But it's, it's just like, for example, it's just like, yeah, on his estimate, he's got solid glass doors, $7,500 apiece, and we don't need solid glass doors.
Wouldn't it be more appropriate to say that the city, that the commission sign off on it?
That's what I would say. City Commission.
Could be fine. But I won't vote.
In case you win the lottery and sign up to come back to work.
But if he's here, I won't vote unless he signs off. Because he knows more about construction.
And I would defer, too. I just think it's more appropriate, myself, to say, City Commission.
He's gonna change his motion.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, and you go second that change?
I'll second.
Commissioner A.G., seconding that, okay?
Could I hear the motion read?
Commission to approve the stipulation that before the final documents are bid, the City Commission sign off on all plans and specifications.
Thank you.
Okay, let's vote. Motion carries.
Good idea, please, thank you.
And you're okay with that, from a legal perspective?
With the commission?
With this, the way it's worded?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number five is Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Approve a Budget Amendment for Design and Engineering and Biddable Construction Documents for the Repair and Renovation of Fire Station Number Two. Is this saying you wanna take the money out of this hand and put it over here?
Yep.
For the time being. It's only fine, because we're gonna have to figure out one way or the other how to pay for the fire station. And right now, I wanna do a loan from the general fund, just to cover it until we get financing for the project.
It'll be listed as a loan back to the general fund.
Correct.
Now, Cindy, what is fund number 001 and account number 3001?
It's fund balance, it's in the general fund.
Shawnee Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Harris, and a second by Commissioner Hall. Okay? No further discussion, let's vote.
She's gonna, you're gonna come back to us with final approval for, like, if we decide to actually build one, then...
There's different options. We have talked about, like, at the retreat, about how we would fund it. And when we get the final plans, we may have to figure out how to pay for it, and this will be paid back to the general fund.
But we aren't deciding to actually build the thing right now.
This money is only for the plans.
Just make a line item for this, to fund it, right? To fund the architect.
The $94,000.
The $94,000 to the architect, okay.
And educate me, what you mean in regard to loan? How is that working as a loan?
We're just, it's a book entry. It's gonna be due to, due from the capital account to the general fund. And once we get the funding, whether we do it in-house, with the funds for next year capital, or in the year after, because it's gonna take some time, it would be paid back, it would be transferred back to the general fund. This is just a short term.
Go ahead.
Borrow from one hand to the...
Peter DePaul in the same bucket of money, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Cindy.
Okay, Eric, voting is open. Motion carries. Item number six, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Declare an Emergency and Authorize Staff to Replace Stadium Lighting Fixtures in the Grandstands at the Shawnee Harte Oklahoma Expo Center. Jimmy Gibson? Oh, you're gonna handle it.
I'll go ahead and handle this, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. At your last meeting, we asked for permission to go out and solicit bids to repair the lighting at the expo. We have determined that all four lights do need to be replaced. As you recall, one of the 100-foot lights recently fell down. I've got a picture of it here. Some of you I know have been out there to see it. But it was a substantial, substantial cost, a substantial liability there with the other three existing lights. And so, we've gotten about $45,000 from insurance coming back for that. And as we've worked with lighting contractors, we've realized that we can lower, with some of the advancements in technology, we can actually lower the lights from 100 feet to 80 feet, which makes them more stable in the wind, also lowers the cost as well. So the cost to replace all four lights will be $102,351. The lowest price that we received was from Shawnee Lighting Systems. It was also the only submittal. Though we did contact 14 companies, and seven expressed interest, only one submitted a quote, which was, again, $102,351,000, $45,000 of which will be paid for from insurance. So staff...
Lower than what your estimate was?
Yes, sir, it was a little bit lower than the estimate, and we're actually quite pleased with that, with that cost. And this is something that really is critical and has to be done. And it has to be done soon because of the timeframe for the rodeo. These poles take about eight to 12 weeks to get in, once they're ordered, and so...
Are they gonna use the same pedestals, or the concrete columns?
Yes, I believe they can use all the same, the same panels.
Concrete pads.
Yeah, the anchor bolts are still good, all that?
Right, absolutely.
They've extrayed both, Michael, and there's no damage to the, to the core, to the concrete core at all.
Good.
Those are about inch to inch, almost. Some of them are two-inch anchor bolts.
Those bolts, yeah.
Yeah, I've looked at all of them.
So the contract we have specified in draft form with Shawnee Lighting calls for this to be completed within 85 calendar days. So that would be done well within the timeframe for the rodeo. So with that, and given the situation there, staff does recommend approval and recommend that you award a bid to Shawnee Lighting Systems in the amount of $102,351.
So we have to declare an emergency first to avoid the bidding, I mean, competitive advertising and all that?
It can be made, one motion, yes.
Okay. I move to declare emergency and award the bid to Shawnee Lighting.
So it's gonna be 102,351 minus $45,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, just to...
Clarify?
I'll second the motion, but just a question on, the county never does pay for anything like this, helping us on the expo, or is, how does that...
Specifically, we did not approach the county. The county does, does do both.
Because of the need to get this done? I was just curious if, you know, if they pay their...
They're gonna split it with us later?
Yeah, I think in this case, we're comfortable moving forward, kind of given the emergency situation that we have. But certainly, we do have a close relationship with the county, and they provide in-kind and direct support to the expo.
And we have funds available?
We do, and the next agenda item is the actual budget amendment.
We'll buy two lights, and they can buy two.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, let's vote. Motion carries.
Oh, Justin, do you have any idea how long those lights lasted? When was the last time they were replaced?
They lasted approximately 25 years.
25 years.
25 years.
Sir?
It's like the fire truck, it's, it's, we have firemen that are younger than that fire truck that we're replacing out there.
It's just, yeah, 25 years.
Should be more energy efficient, too.
Okay, let's move on to item number seven, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Approve a Budget Amendment to Replace Stadium Lighting Fixtures in the Grandstands at Shawnee Harte Oklahoma Expo Center.
Mr. Mayor, we've prepared a budget amendment for you.
Right.
For the commission, so staff does recommend approval.
We did the budget amendment for $79,000, but the bids came in less, so it can be, you know, I'm only gonna take 59.
You know, when we talk about taking it from this hand to that hand, I can't help but think about what's going on out just west of Oklahoma City and that community.
Like, the bond money.
Where they took it from this hand to this hand.
But you're approving it.
Without permission of the commission.
Yeah, they were, they were doing it just...
They were doing it.
I stand for the... But we have a motion to approve it, okay?
Oh, you're, I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Dykstra. Okay, let's vote.
And that was us expecting bond money for general fund expenses.
Motion carries. Okay, I think number eight is just kind of our standard operating procedure here. We do this nearly every commission meeting, seems like, so it's okay. Consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund lump sum payment from defined benefit plan for Charles F.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dykstra. Motion carries. Item number nine is Consider Bids for Curement and Installation of Antennas, Feed Line, and Hardware for North Radio Tower Site. Is we gonna open them, so staff?
Don, is this the same one where the guy for the bid bond?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I was referring, I'm with... This guy? City Attorney. Welston still doing that, or do you have... He's out of business, as far as I know. As far as I know, he's out of business, he's not doing it anymore, so...
That's a problem.
Yes. Mayor, Commissioners, Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director, following your agreement to sever the contract with JTS and authorizing staff to rebid the project, we went out, again, for bids, noticed potential bidders, was published in the Shawnee Newsstorm and online, which also activated notifications to Twitter and Facebook. Copies of the packet were emailed to six potential bidders that we thought might be interested in looking at this project, and then two packets were picked up at the city clerk's office. We received two submissions this evening. The first is from Sky Tower of Yukon, Oklahoma. What they submitted was a proposal. They did not use the bid forms nor any of the attached information that was listed in the packet that was required to be submitted. Therefore, it's not a valid bid. But I did put on here, their estimate was $107,800, just for reference purposes.
They didn't provide bonds?
They didn't provide bonds or anything on there, so... Midwest Underground Technologies was the other package that we received. They're from Edmond, Oklahoma, and they're in the amount of $70,815. And Cindy, what did you decide? Did we want to defer?
We need to get it going, so...
Yeah, I reviewed the packet, everything's in, is in compliance. We have the bid bonds and everything, and it's needed, the questionnaire and everything, that we're satisfied with them. And they came out and inspected the tower on Saturday. Our communications technician went up with them, and so they're, they know the project and what they're doing. So if you're okay with that, staff would recommend that we go ahead and award the bid to Midwest Underground Technologies. We had budgeted this amount in the 911 fund to cover up to, I think it was $70,000, so we're real close there on that. That'll be our recommendation.
Does the 911 fund still have 70,000?
Oh, yes.
I move to approve the contract, staff's recommendation.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harris, and I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Let's vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I guess you can just stay right here. Item number 10 is Administrative Reports. Don Lynch, Emergency Management, okay?
Steve, if you will pull up the PowerPoint, please. Pleased to be here and talk to you a little bit about tornado preparedness. Need you a little more in-depth than we talked about at the last meeting. First off, tornadoes are nature's most violent storm, which is one of the reasons why that we urge our public to be prepared to deal with them as we move into storm season in particular. The tornadoes can occur any time of the year, and they have occurred. As an example, we had tornado warnings in Potawatomi County the day after Christmas last year, because the conditions are right. And when you get those conditions, where severe thunderstorms can form, you have that possibility. On the average, there are about 1,300 tornadoes per year occurring in the United States. Oklahoma's average is 55. Now, last year, we doubled that average. Don't know, there are people who say this year, because it's an El Nino year, will be bad. There are people who say this year's an El Nino year, it'll be good. So we don't know. We'll just have to see how that plays out. But it's important to be prepared when the weather does dictate that the potential is there. So we just remind people to do that. There's something called an Enhanced Fujita Scale that the National Weather Service uses following a tornado event to look at the damage that has occurred on a storm, and from that damage come up with a figure of what the minimum... and from that damage come up with a figure of what the minimum wind speed was in that storm. If they can't measure it, they don't get a good radar calculation, and that is very hard to do because very seldom do we have tornadoes right at radar sites. So they look at the damage and they categorize these tornadoes by the Enhanced Fujita Scale. The good news is that ninety-five percent of all the tornadoes that occur in the United States in a year are in that weak category, the F-zero and F-one tornadoes. There is nobody, no meteorologist, that can take a picture of a tornado, take a look at the tornado on TV, and tell you what kind of tornado that is. We don't know what the wind speeds are in it. Just because it's a big wide tornado doesn't mean it's gonna have necessarily very high winds with it. So we want people to know that the predominance of tornadoes that occur out there, ninety-five percent of them, are in those weak wind categories, okay? Then four point nine-nine percent of the remaining tornadoes are in the strong violent categories, which are up to two hundred mile an hour winds. Only zero point one percent of the tornadoes that occur are the EF-five tornadoes. So if the average number of tornadoes in the U.S. is thirteen hundred, sixty-five of them are gonna be EF-three and EF-four, and two of them are gonna be EF-five. So there's always, when you play statistics, you know, there's exceptions to that rule, but that's the general thing. So we want people to know what to do to protect themselves from those storms. The first two things that we always tell people are to know the difference between a watch and a warning. A watch means to simply watch the weather. The potential is there in the area for tornadoes to occur later on that day. And so you need to be aware of what's going on and be prepared to take action should a warning be issued. If a warning is issued and you're in the warning area, then you're in the path of the storm, and you should take your immediate tornado safety precautions. And we'll talk about what those are in addition in just a minute.
Now, I have a quick question.
Okay.
When the, there's a tornado warning, the siren goes off?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we're gonna talk about that warning, how to get that warning, and that was the second thing we always tell people, is have two ways of getting the warning. The first one that we recommend is a NOAA Weather Radio. The Weather Radio is something that will alert you every warning that goes out there. They're not worried about, is it in their coverage area or is it in, you know, the particular area that they have responsibility for? The Weather Service has coverage areas, and anytime that any warning is, or any watch is issued for that area, it goes out. So you don't have to worry about, are there storm chasers down on that storm or not? You're gonna get that information. The second means that's really good about getting tornado warnings is to have some personal device. Our cell phones now, we can all get, if we have smartphones, the TV stations, the National Weather Service, the Red Cross, State Emergency Management, and the City of Shawnee through our Blackboard Connect system. We all have the ability to send you an alert on your phone and tell you that there is a tornado warning in the area, okay? You mentioned the outdoor warning devices, and we'll get to that in just a second, but that's another way that you might be alerted to the possibility that there's bad weather in the area. Of course, watching your local radio and TV is good, and there are a couple of other means that are out there as well. But that should be part of your plan. Listen to the radio and TV, know how you're gonna get a warning, and be prepared for that.
Don, do you put out the phone calls to the local residents as well?
Yes. Part of the Blackboard Connect system is to go to everybody that is, when we implemented it, we took all of the publicly available phone numbers and put them in there. So if that residence or that business is in the polygon, the area of the warning, they will get a call automatically.
Like a robocall?
Robocall. They don't have to wait for us. It automatically goes out there and it says that this is a tornado warning. When you get, register for Blackboard Connect, and you can do that off of our website, the Emergency Management page at the city's website. When you get that, we will give you the option to let us send that not only to your home phone or business phone, but we'll send that to your cellphone. We'll send you a text message. We send Twitter and Facebook messages at the same time, so everybody who's signed up for the city's Twitter and Facebook feed gets that message as well. So you get up to five different contacts to get that warning. And so that's a good way to have another method of getting the warning. Your plan should be, in addition to having, be able to get that warning, is to have a place to go, to have your plan, to estimate a shelter within your local home or business, to communicate and talk to your family, talk to your employees, talk to the folks who are in the area that you're at. If this is a church, church needs to have a plan. Schools have plans, and they communicate those regularly, and they drill those. They do a drill once a semester of what we would do. They go out and do tornado drills. So same thing, we should do that in our homes and in our businesses and our places of worship. It's always a good idea to look at what secondary hazards might be there. For example, if we have natural gas lines in the area, overhead electric lines in the area, or you have propane tanks in the area, those are secondary hazards that could pose a problem should they be impacted by the tornado. So just kind of know where those are and be aware of them, because that may be something that you come out to in the environment after a tornado, and you want to protect your family from that as well. So be familiar with the terminology, know where to go, have a means of getting a warning. We talked about this. There are warning sirens in the City of Shawnee and in other communities in the county. There is no such thing as an all-clear on any kind of warning. The Weather Service doesn't issue all-clears on thunderstorm tornado warnings. We don't issue them. We don't sound the sirens in an all-clear mode. Nobody does that. So if you are in the position to hear the sirens and you're in your shelter and they go off again, that does not mean it's an all-clear. That means there's another storm impacting, and you need to stay in the shelter. Stay in the shelter for a while.
Don, how many warning sirens do we have?
We have twenty in the City of Shawnee. We could probably use a couple others, and we're gonna look at that in future budgets as the city expands and we get houses that move into new housing addition areas, we'll need to start covering some of those areas, and so.
What are they tested? Are they tested weekly?
We test them weekly. We test them at noon on Wednesday if the weather is permitting, that is, the sky is two tenths or less cloudy, basically clear. We do an audible test on the sirens, so you will hear those sirens go off. If we're in a situation where there is a threat of severe weather, we will not do an audible test at that time. If we are in a situation where it's below freezing conditions, we don't do an audible test because those are chain-driven, and we don't want to mess up the chains on the sirens. But we have the capability to poll the sirens, to check the circuitry, to check the batteries, to make sure it can receive a signal and send a signal back to us so we know it's working. And so that's a good thing for us. When we don't have the opportunity to do a audible warning, we at least do a check, a poll, every Wednesday at noon.
Is it on like some kind of a city SCADA system? Is there like a button?
We do have, we do have a SCADA system that controls it, yes, sir. So we can sound the sirens individually or in groups as we desire, and then that data is fed back to us over the radio. So we have, and it displays downstairs so we know if we have problems with devices or not, so we can check them immediately.
Great.
And know that something is out there. So we're hoping next year in the budget to update that SCADA system to allow us to not have to have somebody in the ELC right there to push the button, to make that decision, but it will automatically do it when the Weather Service sends the weather warning. So at the same time your Weather Radio's going off, your phones are going off, we're doing Blackboard Connect, the sirens in that area will sound, so there's not a lag, you know? We have, we have to, we have to receive the warning, plot the area, and then go punch in the sirens that, so we do it within about a minute, but still, it's better to have it go instantaneously.
That's the minute you lose.
Exactly, exactly. So that's why we put that in the budget for next year to update our SCADA device, so. I've already talked a little bit about the mass notification system. Again, you can sign up on the Emergency Management webpage to register for that, or you can call our office at eight seven eight sixteen fifty, and we'll take your information and put you in the system that way. As was mentioned, we have plenty of devices in the city. Platte County, the other cities in the county and the CPN also have sirens in their territorial areas, and we communicate with those emergency managers and coordinate information sharing. So, and we're all in agreement on test days, and the City Commission, Shawnee City Commission, has adopted a policy on the siren, and that has been adapted by, or adopted also by the county and the other community. So we're all operating in the same methodology, so it does, if it goes off in one community, it's not different from some other community. We're standard across the county.
So when it goes off, it goes off?
When it goes off, no, it will just go off in the areas that are impacted.
In the area?
Just in the area that's impacted, so.
And, Don, could you educate me? I know these are unlike timers, but are they a certain distance from homes?
Yeah, yeah.
I've had a couple of people.
Sure.
Say they're a little loud.
They go off, they're designed to go off for three minutes. These were put in, in the Cold War in the sixties. They were designed to give a sound of seventy decibels outside. They are designed for outdoor warning purposes only. They're not designed to wake you up. They're not designed so you can hear them inside your house buttoned up with the air conditioner going and the radio or TV or stereo blaring or that kind of thing. But we do recognize that there are houses that are close enough to that siren that they will hear that. So there's, there are some that will hear it, there are some that won't hear it. It is, it is for outdoor warning purposes only, and what it means when it goes off, if it's not noon on Wednesday and we're not under a threat of severe weather, when it goes off, it means take shelter and seek more information. So there's some reason why you need to be aware of what's going on and get inside to a shelter, okay? Because very often, you know, we'll have people that are out on the Twin Lakes, and they'll be out boating, and it'll be clear in the western sky, and a storm's coming up from Norman or Purcell or somewhere down in there, and they need time to get off the water into the area. So we want to give them as much lead time as we do, and generally, we have about thirteen minutes if the storm is not forming right over us. You get about thirteen minutes warning before a storm happens, so.
So let me see if I'm clear then. There is not a policy that indicates what the distance is from a home with the sirens?
No, no. It's designed upon, based upon the Cold War theory of having seventy decibels heard in the area. Generally, that goes out about three quarters to a mile distance when you're outside. Now, things that will affect that, Commissioner, are the wind, background noise.
Traffic.
Traffic, trees, foliage in the area. So if you're downwind from that siren, it's liable to carry a little bit farther. You'll hear it. If you're up, on the upwind side of that, you may not necessarily hear it if you're on that mild fringe area. But that's based upon the guidance from the Federal Civil Defense Act, which paid for putting in the sirens in our community.
When there's something coming, most people are standing outside looking.
Exactly, exactly, so. But hopefully, that answered your question, Mr. Mayor, so thank you. To take shelter and seek more information. The best options for tornado protection are underground, if possible, in a storm cellar, or in an above-ground safe room that meets the FEMA and International Code Congress criteria. If you can't do that, then get on the lowest floor in a sturdy building, center portion of the building away from outside walls, get as many walls and roofs between you and the outside as possible. Cover up with pillows, blankets, mattresses, furniture, whatever you've got there. If you've got bike helmets or football helmets or something like that other protective clothing, wear that. You'll see a picture here. You remember in school, we used to go out in the hallways and cover up and make a smaller target out of ourselves as possible. That's what you want to do in your home or in other substantial structures. Cover yourself, cover your head, make a smaller target of your body as possible. We also tell people to wear long pants, long-sleeved shirts, good shoes, not flip-flops, and because when you come outside and you're going through that debris, you don't want to be all cut up if you happen to be in that area. So you want to have some protection for your skin from that. We've talked about this before, that if you are in an area, let me back that up just one, sorry. In an area that's a well-constructed building, even if you don't have a safe room built to the FEMA standard, if it's in the center portion of that home or that building away from the outside walls or roofs, there's no basement available, that is the best place to be in that substantially constructed building. This is from May third, ninety-nine, where you see the center portion of the home, people who took shelter there, not only survived, but escaped with only minor injuries. So, and that was, you know, F-four and F-five damage area, later rated, so it is possible to do that. I show this picture to folks also, if I can get, sorry, I keep bumping that too fast. This is around Shawnee Twin Lakes in 2013, F-four tornado damage that was rated. And if you could see in the center portion, this is not working, center portion of that home was not damaged. So if you took shelter in that area, the F-four tornado came over, you would have survived that storm. Fortunately, the people who lived in this home were not at home at the time, but had they been there and taken shelter in that center portion of their home, they would have survived that storm. We have two public shelters in Shawnee, one in Boy Scout Park for that neighborhood, and then the other is North Rock Creek School, as I had mentioned. We really tell people, when the tornado warning is issued, you need to be taking cover where you're at. It's not the time to get in your car and drive across town because you're liable to be caught out in the storm, and being in a car is one place you definitely don't want to be during a tornado. So if you have to go somewhere to take shelter, go early so that you're there when the warning happens. There was also a movie or some news footage that came out a few years back showing a family in Kansas in the Andover storm that took shelter up under a turnpike overpass, the Kansas Turnpike. That's not a good place to be. Oklahoma doesn't build bridges exactly like Kansas does. In most places, there are no girders. That storm did not even hit that bridge. It went off to the side of it. And so when you've got winds blowing in one way and winds after it passes blowing back the other way, you're basically a stationary target in a large area if you're up under that bridge. If you're out, don't take shelter under that bridge. Find a substantial structure somewhere because you also are liable to find something like this as well, where everybody else is trying to protect their car from the hail damage, and you can't get there. Another good reason why you shouldn't be out trying to travel to get to a shelter when the warning is issued because of gridlock on the streets. And we saw that in the 2013 storm as well, where everybody was trying to leave the metro area, and it was like hurricane evacuation. Four lanes jam-packed, car to car, bumper to bumper, and nobody was going anywhere. So that's not a good place to be. So find a substantial structure where you are.
And, Don, those two public shelters, who opens those during the?
We have, we opened the one for Boy Scout Park, and then we have shelter key holders with the school for North Rock Creek. The faculty there and staff have keys, and they go up and open that. They stay there with their building, and we also send a shelter monitor to let them know what's going on and when it's safe to come back out from that scene, so. If you have a pet, you need to do preparedness for your pets as well. Have a carrier for them. Make sure that you've got a supplies kit for your pets so that they can save a lot of grief after the storm they're taken care of. So now's the time to put that together as well. After the tornado, keep your, keep your family together, render aid as necessary, stay away from downed power lines and secondary hazards. Watch your step to avoid broken glass and other sharp objects, nails. We get a lot of people that get nail cuts and glass cuts following storms. Again, this is when you want to have on the substantial clothing and those good shoes, so you're not walking around out there and accidentally step on a nail in flip-flops, and you're in trouble, so.
I guess since it's after the tornado, it's kind of a, you know, cleaning up or whatnot.
Right.
If, if heaven forbid, something like this does happen, are you gonna be the head guy in charge?
I'm not.
For the county?
Yes and no. I am the coordinator. I'm not necessarily in charge.
So to be the first agent of the scene?
That's correct. We use an incident command system throughout the county, and so field operations are coordinated at the field by an incident commander, who will be, in this case, probably a fire or law enforcement person on the scene. It may be the battalion chief on duty. It may be the captain on the first company in or whatever, but that incident command at the scene is under the responders' control. We will support them in the Emergency Operations Center with. We will support them in the emergency operations center with getting resources and then we will coordinate through the ELC to make sure that everything is covered in the city, that there's nothing left out and I'm kind of the person that is in charge of that operation, emergency operations.
The larger.
The umbrella, the 10,000 foot level, look at it if you will. We will have the department heads in there as necessary and we will, through Justin, keep you informed of what's going on.
Okay, like casualty collection points?
Exactly, exactly. Numbers are going to hospital, damage assessment, those kinds of things. We have a number of volunteers who are trained in doing that and they get trained every year to be spotters and we train them every year in damage assessment as well so that they're ready to do that. We just completed damage assessment training last Thursday night with our folks. We coordinate with the Red Cross, the Salvation Army, the voluntary agencies as well to deal with that, so.
Good.
It's good. So, I have a couple more slides and then I'll sit down. Again, you'll want to make sure that you, as we move into storm season, check and replace your batteries in your weather radio, your flashlights, all your other devices. Remember to have a 72-hour disaster supplies kit, food and water for your family. We recommend at least having one gallon per person per day for consumption because it may take a little while to get supply lines restored and get out there to you. In addition to that, if there is cellphone coverage, you're going to want to have that cellphone to access information, so make sure that it's charged. When we go into tornado watch time, that's a good time to make sure your cellphone is charged and ready to use it when we need it. The last thing I would share with you is oftentimes we've talked about secondary hazards and incident scene, we get a lot of flash flooding related to thunderstorms, not just if they're tornadoes or not, but certainly in severe weather, there's always the possibility that we have areas where water crosses a roadway. As an example, on the Saturday night of Memorial Day weekend last year, Shawnee Fire Department had 23 swift water rescues that they had to go out on because people drove through water. And so, we tell people if there's water across the roadway, it's not that urgent that you get through that water, stop and wait, turn around, don't drown, don't drive through water across the roadway. You don't know how deep it is, it's not worth losing your life and we lost one piece of equipment that had to be repaired and we almost lost three firefighters' lives. There was a firefighter lost in Claremore last year in swift water rescue and it's not a good thing. So, please, please, please turn around, don't drown on that, so.
I've got one thing.
Yes sir.
Let me see. All right. I can't remember. Never mind.
You can catch me after the meeting, we'll talk about it. Any other questions? Again, thank you for the opportunity to present this information, it's always was good to get that out there, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. Item number 11 is city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. I'll be very brief this evening, just give you an update on our wave finding project. Our consultant, Arnett Muldro from South Carolina was in town today and will be in town tomorrow and we've met with them, we did a tour, met with stakeholders this morning and those meetings were very productive and I think we're going to have a good plan in a reasonably short period of time that we can begin implementing this summer. And it's pretty exciting that we can take our brand and our logos and follow up on that work with some major signage improvements around the community that's been talked about for about 10 years and now we're finally in a position to be able to do that. One of the points of discussion this morning was making sure that there's a special emphasis on downtown, on educational and cultural sites in the community and certainly on the Expo Center as well. So, you all will be involved in this process as we move forward and get a little further along with this plan and then also certainly as we select a vendor and assign fabricator and begin that process. Probably on or about July 1st, we hope to have that plan wrapped up and be able to implement mid-summer, so.
Sorry, who put up the sign that's on I-40 just east of here, or west of here, I'm sorry? Out there by McLeod?
That would have been the state.
This is like Red Bud Capital of Oklahoma?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about the billboard.
The billboard, yeah.
The billboard.
BSI.
BSI.
That was BSI, it's nice.
It really does. Happy to get that, get that brand out. We've started internally changing some of our products, the letterhead and business cards and we're working on vehicle decals this week and so in the next 60 days or so you'll see the city brand be implemented in a more conservative way as well. That concludes my report, sir.
Do you have any new business?
No, sir, no new business.
No new business, all right. Item number 13 is commissioners' comments.
Nice pretty red fire truck outside. I need to point out to James that there's not one speck of orange paint on that fire truck.
Looked it over again, you're right.
Okay, not being any more further comments, I am going to recess and convene, recess the commission meeting and convene the Shawnee Airport Authority and I'll call it to order and declare we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hall.
I'm Mr. Shaw.
Commissioner Shaw and a second by Commissioner Hall. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries, any new business?
No, sir.
Okay, then I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and move to the Shawnee Municipal Authority and I will call it to order and declare we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner AG, you made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw, let's vote. Any new business in that matter?
There is none, sir.
Okay, then I will adjourn and re-convene the city commission meeting and go to item number 14 on your packet. And item number 14 is discussion and consideration and possible action to go into executive session for discussion in accordance with 250S purchase or appraisal of real property. And I'm, number 15, oh, I'll take a motion on that for a moment. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harris, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doxter, let's vote on that.
Do we need to state who we're including in the executive session? I know we haven't been doing that, but.
No, not that I know of.
What's that?
Who's included. Okay, motion carries. Item number 15 is discussion and consideration, possible action to go into executive session to discuss potential claims, litigation or other options regarding emergency 911 wireless telephone fees that were collected and not remitted to the city. Chair will entertain a motion in that matter.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Doxter and a second by Vice Mayor Harris. Motion carries, then I will move that we go into executive session. Okay, I'll call the city commission back to order. Item number 16 is consider matters discussed in executive session in accordance with 250S 307 purchase or appraisal of real property. Is there a motion? Not hearing a motion, then I'll move on to item number 17, consider matters discussed in executive session regarding potential claims, litigation or other options regarding emergency 911 wireless telephone fees that were collected and not remitted to the city as authorized with 250S. Is there a motion in that matter? Not hearing a motion, then I will adjourn the city commission meeting.